All right, I'm going to bring the board of supervisors back in session to begin with announcements of items we discussed in closed session, no reportable actions. And then we're going to go to the opening ceremony, so I'm sure we'll get the pledge of allegiance. Aaron, would you like to lead us today?
We're ready to hear. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for implication. Almighty God, we crave this day for your ever enduring guidance. We ask you to clothe us in wisdom and fortitude that we may dispense our knowledge and facts intelligently among all humanity of whom we serve. Amen. All right, I'm looking for an announcement, we did the announcement by the closed session. Agenda approval, addition and or deletion. Mr. Mayor, move, Control, Alba seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public comment? Do I have anybody wishing to address the board of supervisors today? Seeing none, we'll move to an agenda as reported by board members. Mr. Gallagher.
Okay. I attended the chair advisory board meeting last week, and we discussed the possibilities for a potential opening of that fair. Also, I went to the races on Friday night. They had a record, or Saturday night, sorry. They had a record number of cars, there were 92 cars they're racing. It was, it was really fun because they had multiple heats, there were so many cars, they had to have multiple heats in order to have the final races at the end, so that was a, you could tell people were excited to get back to, you know, seeing things like that, so that was pretty, a pretty exciting event, so. I also attended the green waste event in Westwood. They were able to fill two 30-yard bins, and also in Lake Forest, they also filled two 30-yard bins with green waste, so that has been successful, we're going to do it again this coming Saturday as well, so those who need to get rid of their green waste in those communities can go this Saturday, like this last Saturday. Good events.
Mr. Hammond.
We have a successful herbal cleanup. Actually, some of the people were getting together and they're going by some of the elders' people's houses, and helping them clean up their house, their houses in their yards and stuff. We have one coming up in Doyle next weekend, Richard, if we could get a public announcement out for that. Other than that, it's pretty quiet.
Mr. Alba.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too attended the fair board meeting, fair advisory board last week on Tuesday, and also Mr. Gallagher. I was thankful that both Chris and I were there to dispel a lot of the recreational developer happen, early that day, also to explain that a lot of constituents are very concerned about the auction, so anyway, there was a lot of clarification, I think, that maybe was, was not spread, but both Chris and I were there to make that. Tomorrow is RCRC, it's got a nice turnout for the Sacramento community, I assume, so I'll be listening on that. And, I don't know, I'm not sure exactly where it's coming from, but there's a myth going around that if we legalize and allow commercial cannabis growing in last accounting, we'll be able to get state funds to help go after the illegal grows. That is not true.
That is true, wait a moment, that's, I got that from the sheriff. The sheriff mentioned that.
Yes, he did. Do you know why I'm so nervous? You will get money from the state of California.
Sounds like a great agenda item to the district.
Anyway, I have not heard that, and I don't, anyway, y'all talk to me about that.
Sounds like a great agenda item to the district.
Which, it was impressive, the open thing, so. But, if you're late for a special response, Steve, you all hold up.
If we haven't, we never needed, you know, for the end of July, so.
Maybe do a, do a, fire it up in the private.
All right, I'd like to, $500 to go to search rescue, and then the remainder goes to the Big Valley Recreation. And, other than anything, but if you have anything, you want me to bring it up at RCRC tomorrow, let me know. We don't have that much.
Can't give you trouble. I attended a PSA2 meeting on that area aging, and there, we're discovering that we're looking at a significant shortfall in money for protecting the area, seniors, so we act, we're going to have to look into that. I've got a couple of letters that they're asking for individual supervisory rights, so I'll have to bring those. Those were missed, it was yesterday, so I didn't bring that paperwork with me, but we're looking to make sure the governor understands in the current budget how important that is, and that could certainly affect Big Valley, but, yeah.
Well, you have a couple of letters with you.
Yeah, I should, like I said, I should have brought it with me.
All right, well, anybody else? All right, then I think we have enough time to hold the consent calendar, do you have any items from that, the chairman or the rest of the day? G5, G6, any other items? All right, then I'm looking for a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar.
So, I'll approve.
Got here, Alba first, Hammond second, Hammond second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Um, yeah, let's do G5, and then, Aaron.
Uh, did you prepare to present your case set when we were talking about the fair and the votes? I was of no vote on the motion that was made. Okay, I was recorded.
Actually, looking at it, as, I believe the idea is that we begin at Plan A, excluding the carnival, and then move to that which we could reach. And so, I don't know what that wording is.
How would you like me to change that?
I believe the wording would be that we, sort of supervisor wished to begin at Plan A without the carnival, and then adjust as circumstances merit.
Okay, so I'll go back and read the same case, if that works there.
If they weren't there, then you can't do it, see what you can find.
And then we'll come back with those at the end.
And then we'll come back with those at the end of the debate, so.
So, we're going to table this item, though.
Thank you.
Do I need a motion to table, or?
You leave.
I wouldn't need that motion to table, I, G5, so future votes, proper corrections, can be second.
Alba moves, Hammond seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I'm curious. Since we have Regina here, and we've hit 10 o'clock, I think we'd go ahead and recognize our 20-year employee. I'm sure there are words for you for this one.
No word necessary.
I could not have seen that. Do I have anybody that'd like to?
Well, I would. So, Regina's been a fixture in the county administrative offices for a long time, she doesn't live out of it, but she's been in our department, and she's seen a lot of CAOs come and go over the years, and she actually was involved prior to being administrative officers, many of you might not know, in the local abuse authority, in the Erlon reuse project of that one, you know, well before the New York Act, and she's, as long as she's been there, she's just been a team player, always looking out for the best interest of the county regardless of the individuals that are happening to be in the different chairs at the time, and never about to worry about anybody, employees, now that she's moved into the personnel office, really respect her, and she's done a great job in helping employees through whatever issues they have with different departments, I just really appreciate her, she's, she's just a star in our administrative team, she always has been, love working with her, so, thank you, Regina.
Thank you.
I might take after that just real quickly, as a new supervisor, you know, there's a lot of little things you don't know, and I know, and I appreciate Regina keeping us on the, on the right track, and making all those appointments for us, and, you know, getting us set up for whatever conferences we needed to get it to, so I appreciate that, I'm sure with your new, new role, you'll take care of the employees in the same way, so we really appreciate you.
Well, Chris, I was going to say the same thing, you know, this is a new supervisor coming in, she, she really keeps you on the straight and narrow, gives you good, sound advice, she always has a smile on her face, she's always willing to help, she always thinks about every day that is with you, and for all those things, that's what makes you such a great person, and, thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
But, but, but.
You know, I had always seen, when I was over in DA's office, I'd always seen Regina in and around the county offices, but I've never had an opportunity to work with her very much, and certainly when she was working in the CAO's office, we had some interaction, but man, we have had a lot of interaction, daily interaction, when she handed work in HR, and I guess she's always kind of mostly cool and collected and calm, but man, there's a lot going on in there. This is a productive, sharp, great person to work with.
And she has a green thumb.
Not any easier than that. Thank you, Regina.
Thanks so much.
She also decorates very awesome for Halloween, here we go.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Don't forget your, I think it's a clock.
On the pony.
On the pony.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
I would like to thank Regina. A little over six months ago, I am the personal coordinator, and she's been my lifesaver for some HSS employees over the past six months, and I want to thank you for your kind of mentoring me to make over the decision.
Awesome.
So, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you guys so much.
It's my pleasure.
All right, well then we will move on to time certain, public hearing, panel, 5:00 AM, planning and building services.
We try so hard to be.
We're the staff report, here we go.
David Farwood, Building Services Department, Chair and Board members. So, please, your DA is, the proposal to amend the last amendment safety element in accordance with government code section 6531 to incorporate multiversational, multi-handed engagement, about to be forced to be provided by the City Council, and Tuesday, the end of May, on December 7, 2018, approved by the State Department Agency, on February 16, 2019, into the last amendment safety element. The action request, or one and two, the staff report, and the recommendation from the funding commission, that's fund commission, which is 50420, which pretty much tells the story of what's happened and what you're doing if you're in a, pretty much condenses the staff report. The second requirement request is to direct the environmental office to file a notice of exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act. The third action is to adopt a resolution, amend the last amendment safety element, or alternatively, instead of any of the above, give different correction. So, despite the size of this staff report, this is actually a very simple project. So, the hazard mitigation plan was adopted in December of 2018, we want to make it part of the safety element, we want to incorporate it by reference into the safety element. Now, procedurally, there are a lot of things that have to happen, unless one package, so they had an identical mandate of the board of forestry, they had California Forestry and Fire Protection, they had to consider it, and there's a lot of noticing, and there's a lot of work that is going to do, so that's why the package, as big as it is, but in terms of the project itself, it's simple. We're taking a document that was adopted by the 425ers, City Council, Council of the City of 24, and we're incorporating it into our 65. So, other than that, the 74 safety element that we have is staying in place. So, why are we doing this? Why are we doing this? Basically, by adopting the hazard mitigation into our safety element, there's a possibility that local share of the data funding, that CD75% could be paid, it opens the door for its help with the, our cost share, our portion of the adopted funding. There's a guaranteed funding, but it opens that door, and that was referenced on page 2, U.S., that's truly a capacitive reference, so it's the second paragraph that you pulled there from the California Health Administration, and that's referenced, is the Civil Bill 2014, and that Civil Bill adopted some legislation, some state law, that said that counties can do this, if they can adopt the hazard mitigation plan into their safety element, and by doing that, it makes these 75%. So, that's why we're doing it. However, you know, our current safety element is 1974, it's very, very old, it's almost a full time, that's very old, it's almost 50 years old, so, you know, we need to work on it, obviously, it seems easy to happen, that was due by the board of forestry and Fire Protection, I think it's on sort of page 20 of the packet, we went to, actually, it was my first meeting, public meeting by webinar, we had a meeting with the board of forestry, morning I participated, and we testified or commented during that, told what we're doing, we actually had the staff of forest, our letters and notices, but their review from the assessment is on certain page 20, and tends to go to page 24, and there's a series of things that it has to do, and we'll notice in the middle column there that there's a lot of notes, there's mostly notes, no, it doesn't mean that, what doesn't mean that. So, we're adopting now the hazard mitigation plan into the safety element, that's all we're doing, that's, this is pretty simple, there's a resolution in your board packet you consider, but it's recognized that we need to amend the safety element. So, with that in mind, we're going to have a separate project, we're both going to be coming forward, probably until April, early August, with a contract to secure consulting to help us do that, and we have gone through the ARQ process, and we can be able to do that, so that will come forward, that would take, you know, maybe a year, if all goes well, it'll take a couple of years to get it done. We really didn't want to wait a year, because we don't know when disaster's going to happen, and can't control it, and so, basically, since, really since we adopted the hazard mitigation plan in 2010, 2018, we've been working two courses in, we worked with the Southland, Department of Forestry, Fire Protection, the Board of Forestry, and kind of came up with a way to do that, just incorporated by reference, and we provided the noticing, starting with Consider 16, which is in the packet, to the Board of Forestry, saying that that's what we wanted to do, that's what the April 7 hearing was about, to the Board of Forestry, telling them what we wanted to do, and they didn't have any issues or any problems with it. They did want us, and do want us, to update our safety element, because it is the desperately of being updated, and so that is something we're working on, they had no problem with that, just incorporating the hazard mitigation plan into our safety element. So, that is really all we're doing, and so, all this paper is supposed to be something really simple, just because, like I said, there's a lot of noticing, there's a theory with Board of Forestry and Fire Protection, and that's recognized, there's a lot of correspondence, that sort of thing, so that is all we have here, that can set the stage legally for me, we should be able to take action now, to be able to adopt hazard mitigation into the safety element. So, if you look in the packets, I think it's 5, U.S., 5, or no, 7, U.S. 7, there's a resolution that we're proposing, adopt, it tells the story, mostly of what's happened, that can be taken place, in terms of, for the unit sample expense, the final emission, the cost of that, or the final emission, and that's the end, but, yeah.
Why don't I see if we have any questions for the board, and if not, then I'll open the public hearing. Do you generally have any questions?
Say we have a fire disaster this summer, does this mean that we're not able to apply for any disaster relief funding?
This doesn't guarantee anything, this just opens a door that isn't open otherwise, which is, you know, cap to, to normal pain, to our cost share, and so, it just opens the door, the Civil Bill 2140 was the one that adopted it, and it added 68, 65.9, and 65, 302.6, since the government code, and allows us to do that, and it doesn't, it nobody guarantees that there's going to be funding, because it's, you understand, but it does say that, you know, without it, we do know that there's capital to get, and so, it's also potentially more.
Since we're out of compliance, can we still apply for funding if it happens?
We have, that, our PMA approved hazard mitigation plan is staying in place, it was adopted in December of 2018, it's the safety element that is out of touch, adopted in December of 2014, our hazard mitigation plan was approved by the end of January of 2019, and they're finding that, and that is approved, and we're still with that.
So, that's a yes?
A potential yes.
Okay, what, what?
I think, yeah, I see it, but, I get that, I get that.
So, that's the application process available to us, we're waiting to approve the process for funding, if that's needed. Okay. Mr. Alba.
Can we go back to the record?
Well, it makes sense, it goes back to, if you look at the language in there, when it was adopted, so it goes back to the time that you, the new plan was approved, so the language that you are considering adopting, the resolution that we have before you, has that language going back in time when the hazard mitigation plan was approved, so, so that the record backs back to that.
All right, so I do need, we do need the public hearing for this now, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 10:15. So, first, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this topic? Anyone? Anyone? Anyone wishing to speak against this project? Anyone just wishing to speak on it? Then we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 10:16, and I'm looking for a motion to adopt the resolution.
20-028.
So, there is another question?
Make that motion.
Others, all sorts of things, we've got to do, direct environmental review option, file a notice of exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, and adopt the resolution. That's your motion?
Yes.
So, Gallagher moves.
Second.
Hammond seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that brings us to 10:15, we have a time certain, public work request by Lassen Missionary Baptist Church, we use the courthouse lawn.
One of those church members, so Lassen Missionary Baptist Church is kind of aligned with the corporate social business, regulations kind of in effect, and they have to refill their, their church, they're located across, you know, across the street from the courthouse lawn, so they're looking at an alternate location to social distance and older church services, and it's a lot of activity that they're doing, so it's requesting that they at least have lawn every Sunday, service to a couple of guys, I've seen a little setup before that, we'll take down there as well, and do this every Sunday, until restrictions are lifted, and they can return to your normal use of their church facilities, across the street. Model we're using for this, of course, is, so it's a little bit of a assembly, they use the courthouse lawn for their annual outdoor costs for September, they're the single one-page user agreement, just tells out basic guidelines about the use of required insurance, specifically level insurance for the use, and they're going to keep it good condition while they're at the, in Lassen. Again, questions on that, I have Pastor Clark here to answer those, if they can more specifically on that, otherwise, if you have any questions, you know, if you have use.
Mr. Alba.
I was just going to work with the whole construction going on, is that going to...
It will not affect at all, our structures are all basically inside, and the exterior fence is all the back side of the courthouse, so that front lawn is, has, and always has been, until we do a project.
No, we don't, it's one thing.
Our, yeah, no, yeah, we also have a lot of, but there's, there's a lot of conflict there also, and this.
Is it going to be that type of light over here?
No, there's no conflict, it's a structural, and it's, it's a lot of breakable stuff still, to circulate around, we just have a fence around the areas that we actually have, a little issue going on.
Reservoirs, a water station.
That's their responsibility, so they have a facility across the street, they have still access for that kind of use, what I mentioned is, they are fitting their, what the terminology for the plan is, but their use plan for the social business and everything has to be submitted to the health department, and have a discussion with this law, you know, where that has occurred to them, so.
Electricity?
They need to do something that's on them to provide, I don't have any ability to run power, output to that.
If you use a generator or something.
Yeah.
Anybody else applying for the evaluation?
This is the first question I have. And first, if you, if you, if the board allows this, would you, this, this, and then, yeah, if anyone is ready, you know, discretion there.
Your action request is considered a request, so are we looking at just head nods, or maybe?
Yeah, direction, yeah, because, well, like I said, the model we have for the, it's like you said, the, the draft here, they're about the application, you either based on that, you have you, Mark's is also president of the organization, and then, I think they will sign as the county president.
You specifically asked for that approval?
Yes.
So, that's the action, Mark. I have a problem with, so I'm looking for, I, I got a, yeah, I got a motion, I got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so we go back to G6, we left it behind. That is the victim witness assistance program.
I'd just like to make a couple of corrections.
the, 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 contracts coming to the, um, Parma D, and, uh, the monster truck show has been canceled. So, um, it, uh, they're kind of the same problem with a lot of people, which is not enough rocks that make it work their way along.
So they canceled the contract?
Um, actually I talked to them to see if they were, if they were able to count them and stuff and, and he just decided it was better if they're not doing it today.
But we, did we have a contract with them?
Um, yes.
And they canceled?
Monster truck. Monster truck.
I, I just want to make sure that we make these distinctions when they occur. We didn't cancel the monster truck rally. They canceled it. Is that correct? Jim?
Yes.
Thank you. Continue.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm sorry. That's pretty much all I got. I mean, we haven't learned too much stuff except, you know, with the Jackson Hall. A lot of people have been using it, so that's a good thing. So, do you have any other questions, Henry? Yes?
Um, sorry. We were talking last week and also with the fair meetings about the virtual sale, virtual and whatnot. I mean, maybe if you could go over that again, what the dates are and kind of the expectation we can, how do we, how do that work if you can explain how do we get a, 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 a...
What they're going to do is, Richard probably stepped in, I might say it wrong, but they're planning both the virtual and a backup, which would be the live show. They're going to come in the same days as normal. And there's a lot of virtual sales that are going on that way. So we, um, Wayne, Wayne's men, he decided that they're going to, we're going to do both of those if we need to. So that's pretty much all I can tell you, Richard. You have something else?
Not on that particular item, but I, I would, the board would like, maybe just for the sake of understanding the current status as things are changing rapidly, I could kind of go through my understanding of the activities at the fair and maybe ask for Jim to correct me if I have something wrong.
Okay.
And, you know, maybe just going to coordinate with you at the fair, I understand Tuesday night, the four H group is canceled.
Correct.
Their four H barbecue that they would normally have, normally they began to take off event, I understand the four H group canceled that.
Correct.
Moving on to Wednesday, Wednesday night would typically be the occasion, which I understand is still in planning stages and still hoping to, to occur. Also, normally, as we discussed last week, the fair carnival would begin on Wednesday. Fair carnival, vendor canceled and like we're hearing about the monster trucks right now. Moving on to Thursday, I think the Lassen Family Services has or had planned to sponsor a tribute ban on Thursday night. And I believe they're still planning on that, although the guidance coming out as early as, you know, two o'clock this morning from the governor's office that they preclude that. So that's still kind of in the planning stages, but hoping to occur. Then Friday night, a similar event, a concert that Ken talked about, Parma D. If this guidance that we're seeing today is in effect, we'll preclude having that event. But subject to change, I suppose. And then Saturday would normally be the fair parade. I understand the Chamber of Commerce would normally, which are sponsors of that event, has canceled that, is that right?
I never, I, I first don't matter.
They've canceled, yes.
Okay. But it's not right the Chamber made the decision to cancel that?
Well, how you were told by the fair board, they had done nothing to, how you were told by the fair, Chamber was told by the fair board, they've done nothing like with Cal Trains to get permits to close the highway and stuff?
Okay.
So it's a...
The fair, the fair advisory board?
Fair advisory board, yes, sorry. Fair advisory board has told the Chamber that they were not planning on doing the fair parade.
Okay. So because of that, the Chamber decided not to do it. Anyway, so Saturday also would normally be the Ranchers Day event in North Carolina. And I understand that's still under discussion and planning and hopefully going to occur. Then Saturday night would be the monster trucks normally canceled, correct?
Yeah.
And then Sunday, and I did speak with Wayne Neusten from the livestock event committee last night, and they're still hopeful to do a live auction in conjunction with a, some sort of other platform as a complimentary process for the sale. And then Saturday night would be the races, around...
Sunday night.
Or, I'm sorry, Sunday night. So I think that's the current planning for the fair, although I would caveat that and let's longer may have some comments on this as well. Up until yesterday, the state's guidance regarding mass gathering events and other types of events has been to allow discretion below the level and issued guidance to words like should as compared to shall, where it's happening when it comes to state orders. And they pulled back on some of that and issued more definitive guidance regarding events such as festivals, concerts, et cetera. And depending on how you define those events, then they preclude some of more theramist things.
Richard, can I say one thing? I said that the monster truck show was canceled. I called it up and canceled it. It wasn't meant to cancel on us. I believe before it was because of the over-expensive of our budget. So we're going to probably lose some stuff around. I just want to clarify that, that's not...
I, I think maybe it's kind of a, I think Richard did a really good job at talking and addressing what the state's position is. And he's absolutely correct. A lot of the language has been, you should consider this, we highly recommend that, but it's again up to the local county because they say, and you've heard me say this before, you got to look at the data, you got to look at your county, you have to look at the cases and the surge and things like that. So I did have a really good conversation with Dr. Corver and we talked about all this. So we talked about what was going on in our county and he was incredibly pleased with how our public health department and, and partners have been doing with identifying the, the positive folks and then containing that by doing the contact tracing and really isolating the folks so we could contain that spread. We kind of call it like putting a bubble around them or wrapping around them. So making sure that they don't get out into the community and that they can provide the supports to help them. So that was what the whole direction was from the state. And us being here and having just a few cases and able to mitigate that felt pretty good about, you know, Dr. Corver was very encouraged and said, you know, in his words, the show must go on, the fair must go on. But now, um, and again, you know, having the guidance and having the, the direction put CDFA with kind of the green light for us to make the decision, we then were working, working very closely with Jim, with Richard, kind of seeing what we've offered in the past and how we can get that list and move forward with some things in a very safe, modified, helpful way. And it feels, you know, even last night we were working on it and then now to hear that we might not be able to do that because the shall is now changing to must not. And to me, that's a little more definitive, as Richard was saying. So my thought was, again, this is all this morning, kind of waking up to this and thinking that, well, I can't have another call that just be clear as to, is it the local making the decision with the information that we have? Or is it just because of the, the spike that's happening in Southern California? And just to kind of share, you know, that account, the governor is pulling back on opening up too or kind of not on, on the gatherings and things like that. And it's impacting people, you know, all over this, his state. And so I was thinking that when I woke up and heard that, that, oh, I bet our governor's going to try to one-up him, you know? We can't let Nevada be more restrictive than California. So, um, so I think we're kind of, that was the signaling that I was hearing and from just a call that we had last night. And it's, again, it's so fluid and it's so difficult and I don't know if you're hearing different things, but as public health and the, the folks that have to partner and make these decisions, the state seems to be also kind of pulling back from us a little bit. We're finding out about guidance kind of secondhand as public health and they're releasing things that, you know, we hear Friday morning, they're releasing guidance at noon and it kind of comes out around four. So it is, has been frustrating, it's been challenging trying to balance the, our community and what we want to do and trying to assist Jim with planning an event that is just like walking on eggshells. How far do we go and get people to commit to buying supplies and staffing up and renting things? And then having to pull back. And so, um, it doesn't just affect the fair, it affects other things too that we'll have to talk about. So I, I, I don't know what to say in terms of, um, do we sit this one out? Do we go forward and, you know, try to tease through the words here and, and, you know, figure out where the shoulds are placed and where the musts are placed and read between the lines? That's really challenging for somebody in my position to do that and get on the wrong side of events.
You know, if I could add to that, I think, you know, our, our inclination is to, to move forward with these events just as long as there is an iota of hope that they can occur, because we all want to see them occur. The other side of that though, and I can see this from being involved with some local organizations as well, is that, um, there needs to be some certainty early on because there's so much planning because of so many of these efforts. And I don't think it's, uh, it's real fair to, you know, play along as long as we can if, when we start seeing that there's some impediments to being successful in having some of the, some of the events and making decisions early as we can. And I kind of appreciate what the Chamber is then saying, you know, this is, something is right for this year. I think some of the other vendors have done the same thing, Carnival for example, and saying, you know, this just isn't going to work, so we're not going to do it. And I know Jim's been attempting to get in contact with the different organizations that do different events at the fair in, in dealing with their frustration about not knowing. But I, I, it occurs to me that it might be wise to set some sort of target date to reevaluate, make some work here for the state and just make a final decision regarding specific events at the fair. I mentioned the livestock show, auction, I talked to Clay Neusten last night for quite a while about it. And, and they are in a, I think, a good position with some alternatives to, to deal with whatever happens, you know, including, you know, not being able to perform at all. But, you know, I need to find wise to kind of establish some sort of deadline, give all these organizations a benchmark to say, okay, where to go or no to go, I'll survey. I would propose somewhere in the, in the, 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 clarity of, um, there may also be, this is an unrelated assignment, there may be end of the year, purchasing contracting issues that I want the fourth of July to ask before the end of fiscal year as well, so I, that's my proposal in terms of meeting.
Does that meet the, what you're talking about in terms of the need to give certainty to these organizations? Is that, is it only like eighteen days or fifteen days?
You know, I don't know, there isn't a magic date, and, um, I haven't had any specific requests, like Jim may have from different groups, but I'm, I'm just speaking for what I think is practical, that these organizations that are buying supplies or committing to, um, you know, some different functions that they, you know, have a deadline that they work with. Jim might have more input than I, or even the Fair Advisory Board, I'm not an expert on that, that's just kind of what occurs to me.
Well, and, I mean, part of my frustration is there is no certainty with this. We don't make the decisions, uh, and I don't even believe that the state medical officer or the county medical officer is making the decisions. In this case, the medical emergency is what's making the decisions. Um, and so that means the virus decides to a degree, you know, how many the locations of it occur, where they occur. And they all seem to be in Southern California right now, it seems to be driving us, but, um, one of the interesting things should have been, it's either a chance for a spike after Memorial Day in our county or not, and we did not see that. Um, the other opportunity, as I said at our last meeting, is something like the races that we just had on Saturday or the farmer's market that occurred. Um, you know, if there was an opportunity for community spread, it would occur where there are large gatherings of people. And so if we are able to, um, social distance at these events, if the virus doesn't show up there, then it won't spread. And that's the ultimate guide to whether or not, um, we were successful to a degree. What that means, though, in terms of planning for events, is that there is no certainty to a degree, other than if we say no and cancel.
And with regard to the, uh, there are several other events, of course, going on at fairgrounds and tree now and, uh, fair week. Uh, but with regard to the races last week, and I would, and I'm surprised Gallagher mentioned that he was there, and the, the reports are that, um, an interesting phenomenon that they had, the, this record attendance of, they had ninety-two cars when fifty is kind of normal, a lot of stands were as full as they could be. Our, uh, observation of that is that they, uh, had some challenges in meeting the plan that they put forth in terms of trying to, to comply with the social distancing guidelines and some other guidelines. And I, I think those same challenges are going to carry through to their next races and, and Fourth of July events and the fair. And, uh, they may have, uh, escaped danger this time. We don't really necessarily know, but I don't know that it's reasonable to expect that having the large gathering of that and not being able to, uh, comply with, uh, the social distancing guidelines and plans is wise to continue in the future.
Mr. Gallagher?
I, I think the Fair Advisory Board has done a good job in anticipating that something could happen like, much like Calusa. And so I think the best thing that they could do is to plan for the, they've all, always said this is for the kids. And, and this, you know, they spend a lot of money in their animals and things like that, and as Richard and Aaron commented, uh, last, last time, um, you know, that's where they make their money and save money to go to college and things like that. So that's the, that's really important part. I was disappointed by some of the comments on Facebook after, in reality, after last week, uh, just because the carnival, uh, isn't going to happen. You know, it's like, okay, what are we going to do at the fair? Well, what we're going to do at the fair is provide some, some, uh, things for the kids to do that they do every year, and for people to show their wares because they're proud of what they do at that fair. Two months ago, the Fair Advisory Board talked about having a local fair, which I, I thought was a very good idea, and it may come to that, uh, even today. So I, I think this pre-planning that especially Wayne is doing to make sure that sale happens, make sure the, the, uh, the show happens, I think that's important. And, and I think others should take example from that and figure out how you can do the backup. Uh, if we're, if we're not going to have the quilts, you know, if people aren't going to come into the buildings and see the quilts, maybe they could have a virtual quilt show. Uh, you know, start planning for, for items like that in case something like Calusa does happen, so we do have something happening, and we just can't be present to do it. So I, I'm encouraged that, you know, uh, the Fair Advisory Board has thought about that and making sure that the kids are taken care of, and, and I, I really do believe that's the most important thing about this year's fair. It's for the kids.
We talked about the Fourth of July, but what's the update on that? You know, the fireworks normally fire off from our, in fairgrounds, so do we have a contract?
Yes, we do. It's a bigger contract.
And do they intend to fulfill it, do we know?
Yes.
And just to expand on that a little bit, so normally the Fourth of July activities include a race or a set of races, and then the, uh, the fireworks of the conclusion of that.
Well, and that creates, if, even if they're not gathered at the fairgrounds, it creates gatherings around town.
You know, last year, I think we, we had a circumstance where Lake Eleanor, you know, High Water or something canceled their, their fireworks, and I'm just curious if we saw a lot of people come over to our fireworks because that, because I think the same phenomenon would occur this year.
They're canceled.
Right. Well, not just, like I say, our fireworks, but I think that many of the, the parking lots around town were filled with impromptu gatherings of people. Uh, and what's our expectation for COVID, social distancing for that?
Well, it's going to be, because we have the races, whether they're already at the grandstands, so we're going to have to, you know, try to keep that.
Well, assuming that the state guidelines allow us to use the grandstands, it was our county guidelines that allowed it this last time under the variance as we understood it, but if the state really has, use the word, you shall not, um, as of two o'clock this morning for gatherings, then perhaps.
If I can say something, I think I do need to get clarification because you know how I talked about the stages and there's stage two and stage two with variance, and some people are even in a state are starting to use stage three, and some of the things in stage three are moving into stage two, so some people are saying, we're in stage three now, and then as that opens up. So technically, if we are in stage three, those restrictions are in stage two. But so this is the dance we play, and, you know, I just don't know if I have steps anymore. It's really getting to be challenging because the vinegar is changing, the guidance changes, and so, I mean, I can see clarification, and that probably opens up a can of worms, but, um, sometimes you don't want to ask because you don't know the answer. No, I think that was, it warrants asking, but, um, again, that's kind of this with the guidance and, and, and then what's happening, I always look at our partners and our county regional friends, and I'm hearing a lot of them are, you know, pulling back on a lot of different things, and so, yes, people that the community looks to last and they hear we're doing things, I think that's a reflection of what we saw Saturday night, um, because there aren't, aren't a lot of races going on in the state, in Oregon, in Nevada, and so word was out, hey, let's hit it last time, and they had a great time. And I will say that from all reports, I heard that, um, it was very well done, but again, with social distancing and looking at the plan, not everything was followed, and that's the conversation to have, but this might supersede that. So I think my task today is to just figure out where we are with our stages and what guidance that we're truly supposed to be following.
Well, and I think this weekend NASCAR had a race at Homestead that had their grandstands. You thought that we need to be cutting in mask cards, is that what?
The other thing I'm looking at is, um, Disneyland is proposing and advertising that they're reopening July fifteenth, and then there's a little caveat that it's pending per county and state approval. I gotta believe, there's got to be a lot of pressure. They're staffing up, they're training, they're cleaning, and, you know, to me, I'm thinking that's if they have a green light in Southern California, I know.
It's just no theme parks.
I know, but man, there's going to be some fiscal battles going on in Orange County. So that's probably why that came out, because probably not because of the last time conversation, but probably because of the conversations with Disneyland. So I'm keeping an eye on that too, and if that's a go, then, yeah. We can go.
All right. Mr. Felt?
Okay. Gary Felt, I appreciate the rundown of all the events for the fair and this fact of the fair. One thing I didn't hear mentioned, and it's kind of on the side, but a lot of us do volunteer work, the beer garden is that, on the road, I'm not sure who has it this year, but a lot of, it takes a lot of manpower if it's open. But I didn't hear whether or not the fair was planning on running that beer garden. There is. Well, because you don't get up to the top end, you remember who it is, because they can, I remember who it is, I asked them this year.
But, what we know about that, a couple of things, um, operation of the beer gardens doesn't just require a contract with the county, it also requires a permit from ABC. Uh, and my understanding, they have not been issuing those types of permits, but they may be soon. Um, I think there's some real questions about the ability to practically observe social distancing when you're serving alcohol. The whole purpose of these, my understanding, the whole purpose of having a beer garden is so that people can have a beer, socialize, and talk to one another, and that almost directly conflicts with, um, social distancing unless you're going to stand six feet apart and talk. So I think there's some real questions about whether or not that's a wise, um, activity to, to have along.
I, I think once again, we need to look at, this is for the kids. The kids aren't drinking beer, I hope.
Um, do I have any other comments, questions? This is not an action item, we don't hope, so, um, thank you. Did you have any other information for board supervisor?
Oh, thank you for reminding me. So my plan, unless there's some objections, which cannot fall my squeeze, but call it being a policy exam, really, yeah.
All right. Thank you, and that for your journey.